Amen. I 20 old son Elias let to go on is called to order for the prayer will Father William and Angon kindly lead us. Please stand.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, God of love, our ultimate truth and supreme law, you alone rule the world with justice, yet you give us a share in shaping our government and bringing justice to our community. We pray for your richest blessing, oh Lord, all the members of the legislature as they hold their session today. Grant them wisdom, deep respect for others, and humility as they work tirelessly for the good of our island community. Bless them and their families for their selfless acts for everyone, and grant them the grace to continue to inspire others to follow Jesus' example of choosing to serve rather than to be served. May they always remain faithful to their mission of working for the common good, and do this out of love for you, oh God, and for their neighbors. May they together, may they together with all the leaders of our island and the whole community, be blessed in the knowledge and sanctified in the observance of your holy law. Help us to see that only in obedience to your most sacred and perfect will, and in submitting our wills and futures to you, our loving Father and King, will we enjoy true liberty and perfect justice, and experience that peace which the world cannot give. We pray all this through our Lord Jesus Christ to your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Santa Maria in Kamalen, Saint Joseph. And may Almighty God bless you and all those dear to you, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Jesus, mercy, Father, would Senator Chris Duenias lead us in the singing of the National Anthem, and Senator Chris Barnett in the Guam.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave? Panohi tamaru, puritanota, kantai matunani agituru iluka. Para i onra, para i gloria, abiba i isla sen para. Para i onra, para i gloria, abiba i isla sen para. Utodu i tempo i paas, para i taat, zanginu ilanu bende shor. Kon tribe leegru, nafan so fuham, Zeus protei islanwa. Kon tribe leegru, nafan so fuham, Zeus protei islanwa.
For the recitation of Inifreshiu, will Senator Shelly Calvo kindly lead us?
In it fesi, gine mastakalu, gine hasaku, imastakalom, kikura sonhu, janimasfigu, naninyasinyahu, hu frezen maesaju, para ba i hu protei, jan hu defendi, ihi nengi, i kotura, ilinguahi, i aire, i hanum, janithanu tamoru, ninzaku, diretsu, kinin astu astata, eshi hu afitma, ki hilo i piplia, janibandirahu, ibanderaan guahan.
To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of Milazen Mastakilu Nasakofisu on display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of Imelazen Mastakilu Nasakofisu, would the Majority Leader, Senator Jesse Luhan, you are recognized?
I am honored and thankful to be honored by the leadership of my best at having the foundation of my pride and my trust.
Itu, my quest, Escano, for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Thank you very much. Madam Perd, please take your call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Senator Barnett. Speaker Blaz.
President.
Senator Borja. Senator Calvo. Senator Duenias. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Luhan. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez. Senator Salis Matanani. Senator San Augustine. Senator Taidegui. Senator Turlahe. Mr. Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we move forward, in the passing of a former colleague and speaker, Speaker Mark Forbes, ask my colleagues for a moment of silence, so we can remember. Fine gentleman. Please stand. Thank you very much. Majority Leader Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to approve legislative journals dated January 6, February 27, and March 12, 2025, subject to corrections.
On the motion to approve legislative journals dated January 6, February 27, and March 12, 2025, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended into today's session journal.
On the motion that communications and petitions be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There are messages from the Magahagan Guahan, and I move that they be appended in today's session journal.
On the motion that messages from Imagahagan Guahan be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they be appended in today's session journal.
On the motion that reports of standing committees be appended to today's session journal, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objections, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, there are no reports of select committees.
Thank you. Proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move that bills introduced, Bills Number 1 through 38 C R R through 95-38 C R R, and resolutions introduced, Resolutions Number 1 through 38 C R R through 32-38 C R R be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to excuse senators not present in today's legislative session.
On the motion, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of the legislative session be considered first read and adopted, and allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objection, motion carries. Legislative concurrence, Vice Speaker. Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure, the nomination of Mr. Joseph F. Arturo Cameron to serve as a member of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission with a recommendation to report out early only.
On the motion, are there any discussions? Senator Zelaya, you recognize?
Sijus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. We all know Mr. Cameron, so my remarks are not in any way a reflection of him or his integrity or his ability to do the job of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, but I rise in opposition to all the nominees on today's agenda for the Tomorrowland Trust Commission because of the recent firings of two Tomorrowland Trust commissioners who were, in fact, doing their jobs, fired for seemingly no cause. The only one stated publicly was not returning a phone call. And ironically, these commissioners are some commissioners that we owe a great debt to because of where the Tomorrowland Trust is today. It's on the brink of moving what has been held in abeyance for decades because of revolving political directors, revolving agendas, mixed priorities, and getting back to the priority of residential leases, making sure that the Tomorrowland Trust gets value for each one of its commercial leases, better value than ever before, that it's not going to roll over and give away land. And these commissioners were vetted by us here at the legislature. Long, arduous processes, they were vetted, and they were put on the job, and they were actually doing their job. Another, the Tomorrowland Trust is on the brink of issuing residential leases, correcting and making sure that those who are impacted by Typhoon Mawar are going to receive their loan guarantees, finally, that they are going to hopefully get some infrastructure in place so that they are living in habitable conditions where there is sewer and water, where we can have real subdivisions instead of the conditions that we have seen over the years. And they have held themselves accountable against corruption that the Attorney General had to investigate Tomorrowland Trust for in previous terms. And they have held their work transparent to the people of Guam. They've asked questions. They've demanded answers. That's their job. They should actually have received an award for the work that they have been doing to bring this Tomorrowland Trust forward, for leading us in this effort, as opposed to being fired. And it's very ironic because the commissioners that were fired were, in fact, the commissioners who we owe an even greater debt to because they were personally part of a group of people on Guam who insisted that the Tomorrowland Trust was going to be implemented after 20 years of being on the books and not being implemented. They protested. They educated alongside Angel Santos, Ed Beneventi, and then Ashon Tomorrow. And they educated the people of Guam so that the senators had to move, the governor finally, after lawsuit, had to move and implement this trust. And we have no room to go backwards right now. This is a critical time. We have to move forward. There is no time for a learning curve. We need to move forward. We need to get, we were under a court litigation that everybody worried about for years, and now that we have cleared that hurdle, we need to bring the housing in, the housing for those people who lost their land from the United States land takings. That's what the courts have agreed. That's why the courts have agreed with us and said, move it forward, because that was an injustice that they recognize, that the people before us in the legislature recognize, that the people of Guam hopefully can still recognize. And we see the impacts every day in those who are homeless, those who have to share houses. Because their lands were taken, they lost their ability to provide for their families. Many of them lost farmland, the ability to traverse property to fish, a whole way of life because of massive land takings found by every single legislature to be unjust.
Senator Zelaya, can I please ask that you stick to the nomination of Mr. Cameron?
Yes, it's very important. He's being nominated to the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, which is why I'm trying to say the reasons why. We need to focus on what the Tomorrowland Trust Commission is doing right now and what they are on the brink of doing.
I'm sure we can appreciate that. Oh, thank you very much.
So I believe it's wrong to condone the firings by moving forward on these nominations right now. We are the legislature, separate branch of the government of Guam. We have been given the organic act authority to confirm nominations from the governor. These people were not even able to serve their full terms. What have we seen across the board in the government when it comes to people serving their full terms? No one else has been removed for impropriety in procurement, impropriety in hiring, or other impropriety that's made the newspapers. It's a mockery of our confirmation authority. And so, for that reason, I want the Tomorrowland Trust to move forward. I want the governor to be accountable for ad hoc firing of people because they don't return her phone call or for no reason at all because they don't toe the line. And what's the line that's trying to be told at the Tomorrowland Trust? To take the property out of the trust and give it away. To take the property out of the trust for special interests, businesses, special interests in general, take it out. To lessen the priority of residential leases. For that reason, Mr. Speaker, I am going to oppose the three nominations for the Tomorrowland Trust that came down from the governor after she fired the two sitting commissioners who were, in fact, doing their job. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duenias, on the motion.
Sijus Massey, Mr. Speaker. And in keeping with your rules of decorum, I would speak to the nominees or the nominee currently.
Thank you very much.
With all due respect to the retiring speaker, and certainly the issues of why other individuals have been relieved of their duty, that, I believe, answer rests with the governor. The governor is the governor of Guam and has that authority and has that power. I stand in support of Mr. Joseph Cameron because of his experience and the fact that his testimony during his confirmation hearing to me stood up to the test of acting judiciously, acting in good faith, and acting with his capabilities and his experience. In the event that we're going to talk about all three, I'll just mention with the other two because I think we're going to have votes up or down on all three. It's clear to me with the other two as well, their depth and knowledge in housing, in the real estate industry. Let's be honest with ourselves. It's very clear. Tomorrowland Trust is a real estate holding. It's a real estate holding of a trust that is entitled to the beneficiaries who qualify. But all of the degrees and motions and whatever it takes to move forward things apply to real estate law on Guam. From loans to zoning, to parcelling, you name it. So as I close, to say that I saw fit that all the nominees who came before us, their records were clean, they don't have any criminal records, they have honorable service in the government and in private practice. And as I close, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, my concern is that we wouldn't be doing our duty here if we weren't moving forward, acting on the governor's authority. We may not like it. We may not agree whatsoever that the very qualified members who are relieved of their duty were relieved. But in our tripart government, in our duty and responsibility as a legislature, we have before us what we have, exercising our confirmation power based on the governor's ability to appoint. For me, my concern would be we would get into a stalemate then. If we have members of the body that will accept no one but prior members, then we would absolutely not be able to test and see if the Tomorrowland Trust Commission is going to operate on all of the things that the retiring speaker said. This house has oversight, Mr. Speaker. We can call the Tomorrowland Trust down here at any time. We can attend their hearings. We can write letters to the director and the governor if we believe that they are not acting in good faith, and if we believe that they are not carrying out the duties and responsibilities of the commission. Absent that, Mr. Speaker, nothing moves. And so, for the sake of moving forward and respecting the governor's power, unless we change those powers, unless we usurp those powers, as the saying goes, sometimes unfortunately, it is what it is. But I, for one, having worked very hard in my prior service to move things forward with Tomorrowland Trust and Guam Housing and other entities, think that it's in the best interest to allow these individuals who have qualified for these positions to sit and to judge their actions based on how they perform their duties. So for that reason, Mr. Speaker, I will be voting to confirm all three members, starting with Joseph Cameron. Sijus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Duenias. On the motion, Senator San Austin, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, simple question. Is this the proper time to ask for a motion to change from report out to to do confirm, so we can send it to the voting file? Because right now it appears that it can't go anywhere. Am I correct?
That will be decided upon the body.
Okay, so the motion, I can make the motion then to change that from report out to to do confirm, recommend to do confirm, so we can go to the voting? Because it's only report out right now. And the reason why I'm saying that, Mr. Speaker... Because it's only report out right now. And the reason why I'm saying that, Mr. Speaker, is that we need to vote. We need to vote on them, either up or down, whichever way it goes. That's what I wanted to make the motion on, if that's the appropriate thing to do at this time.
That motion can be made and is considered, we consider the actions of the body. However, in this, at this juncture, all the motions, all the nominations are up for discussion.
Okay. It's up for discussion.
If you want, if the body wants to discuss it, yes.
Okay. So then making the motion then to proceed on to with the recommendation to do confirm would be appropriate at this time, correct?
Yes.
All right. Well, then that's my motion on Mr. Cameron and the other two. I'll speak on the other two later. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's my motion then.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and we need to dispense of the motion. The motion is basically to do confirm. Okay? On that motion, Senator Tydeary.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. Point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker, just to verify, the opportunity to speak on this motion to allow debate is like 15 minutes for individuals who would like to speak on it, correct? Is that, is this is the proper place in order to...
This is the proper place.
Proper place to be? Okay. Because I do want to speak on the nominees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me dispense of the motion first. Okay? On the motion.
Point of order. We were discussing a motion. I think the motion was to place the nominee onto the agenda. Is that correct? Or to put it voting file? So the motion was to place a nominee to the voting file. It's in the voting file where we will vote whether to confirm or not. So I believe that that motion to confirm is...
It's the recommendation to confirm.
It's only the motion that the original...
It's a recommendation to confirm and then it moves to the voting file, yes.
So we're debating that motion right now. There's a pending motion to place it on the voting file.
Yes, that's the motion.
And that's where we will confirm.
That's the motion.
So my point is that this motion is out of order.
This motion is not out of order because basically that is the rule of the body, the will of the body. Okay?
Mr. Speaker, did...
Let's take a recess. One minute recess. We're back in session. Senator Austin, for the purposes of identification, can you please clarify your motion?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Number one, my colleagues, on the agenda that we all have a copy, it says with the recommendation to report out only. All I'm asking is that it will reflect with the recommendation to do confirm, not denying anybody to speak about each individual. It's just to shift from report out only to reconfirm with recommendation to do confirm. That's all. That's all my motion was for. And I'll be doing that on the other two candidates, nominees. Mr. Speaker, was, is that pretty?
Thank you very much. On the motion, okay, is to reflect that the committee's recommendation...
Mr. Speaker, dispense. As point of inquiry, how does that affect the committee members who voted to report out only the confirmation?
That's up for the body to decide then. That's up for the body to decide then. Okay? If the body so wishes that if you want to just stay with the report out, don't vote for it. Okay?
Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
What's your point?
With all due respect, the committee report is done, it's filed, it's what we're acting on. Their recommendation has been made. I don't believe there's any such motion to amend the committee report's recommendation by the body. That's a committee recommendation, not ours. Our vote will be on when this moves to the voting file, whether to confirm or not.
Thank you. Just so that for everybody, okay, this does not, once this motion is dispensed, this does not, okay, stop all discussion on the nomination. Okay? I will tell you that after we dispense of this nomination, the next one I'll go to, Senator Tydeary, because she had her hand raised, to discuss the matter of the nomination of Mr. Cameron. Is that understood? So while it is understood and is recognized that the committee had put out the report that says to report only, it is up to the will of the body as to whether or not they want to accept that or they want to change that. So I appreciate the point of order, but that is going to be my ruling. So therefore, on the motion to change the report from report out to do confirm, there is an objection. You want to raise a point of order here, Senator Tullai?
I'd like to speak on the motion, Mr. Speaker.
Rules allow it. Go ahead, Ms.
Sisus Massey, I object to changing a committee report after it's been reported out. It's a completely different function of the legislature. To vote whether to confirm or not, yes. But to go back and change reports as how they have been reported out, what the public record is, I don't even know how the clerk is going to do that. They're going to go back and actually change a report, the findings, the vote that they took in that committee. So I object to doing this. And I've actually never seen it done in all my time, even as counsel. I've never seen anyone go back in and change the committee report unless it was referred back to a committee. So I just object to that. I don't want to set any kind of precedent in here where we're going back in and meddling with committee reports that have already been reported out. Sisus Massey.
Thank you. So noted. On the motion, any... Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity to also rise in opposition of the motion. I'm on the committee and I voted to report out only these nominations, as you yourself did, Mr. Speaker. So, yeah, I've also, in my short time, never seen a motion like this. So I would just, maybe if we could inquire with the committee chair if this is something that he supports. Because, you know, to kind of piggyback on the retiring speaker, this is the committee report. And if it says report out only, it is what it is. So I don't see how we can then go back in and change the committee report, which seems separate and apart from the process of placing the nominees onto the agenda, Mr. Speaker. Sisus Massey.
So is that a question that you would like to pose to the committee chair?
Sure, I guess so, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair of the committee, will you yield to the question?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield to the question. I believe when the committee report was circulated to do confirm or report out only or other standings that they may have, the committee reported as what each member voted on the committee. And that's how we reported out to the body. The majority, right?
So the majority of the committee members reported...
To report out only.
To report out from the committee.
And I did my due diligence in doing that process and reporting it to this body for their debate and discussion and also for their vote.
Thank you.
Sisus Massey to the chair of the committee for that information. And I think that really is a slam dunk on this. You know, the committee voted to report out only these nominees. And, you know, I'll just speak for myself on why I voted report out only is because even if we don't consider the firings of the previous commissioners, you know, in questioning these nominees and the nomination confirmation hearing, I was very dissatisfied with their answers. In fact, two of the three nominees had little to no knowledge about the operations of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. So that's why I voted to report out only. And I don't appreciate so early in this term that we have members trying to rewrite history already. So, Mr. Speaker, Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to make a ruling from the chair. I'm going to rule that in difference and in respect for the committee chair and how it was reported, it was to report to report out, I'm going to rule Senator Austin, your motion out of order. Okay? Continuing with the discussion, Senator Tydeary, you go recognize.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues on our first day in school. You know, Mr. Speaker, this subject strikes at the very heart of our duty as being public servants. There are three branches of government. We have a duty to be separate and apart, but most especially to provide that checks and balances. Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Speaker, recently, we witnessed the dismissal of three individuals from a board, individuals whom this body confirmed after careful consideration of their qualifications and commitment to serve the people of Guam. These individuals were not dismissed for incompetence, misconduct, or failure to fulfill their duties. No, they were removed simply for doing what they were appointed to do, making decisions in the best interest of the people and our island, and merely serving, not serving as the yes man to the governor. When these individuals were vetted, they were asked critical questions. Would they act independently and make decisions based on what is right for the people of Guam? They assured us they would. And they upheld that promise. Their removal sends a chilling message that standing up for what is right, even when it conflicts with the desires of the administration, comes with a cost. As senators, we have a responsibility to ensure that our boards are composed of individuals who are not only qualified, but also willing to act with integrity and independence. By refusing to vote on replacement of these individuals, we send a clear message. We will not condone or politicize our boards. We will not allow the dismissals of dedicated public servants to go unchecked. And we will not compromise the principles of accountability and transparency that our people deserve. Mr. Cameron is probably amongst all of you, he's my, what we call each other, BFFs. And I did have a conversation with him and let him know how I feel. This is not about politics, though. This is about governance. It's about ensuring that our boards serve the people, not at the whims of any one individual. But to stand firm in our commitment to uphold integrity of our institution and trust of the people that we serve. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, any other senator willing to speak on the motion? There is an objection to the motion to place the nomination of Mr. Joseph F. Arturo Cameron to serve as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. All those in favor of moving Mr. Cameron's nomination to the voting file, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Senator Carville, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I moved the place in the voting file from the Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, Women's Affairs, Disability Services, the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation, and Agatne Restoration, the nomination of Ms. Donna W. Klopemberg to serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any discussions? The motion is to place the nomination of Ms. Donna W. Klopemberg to serve as a member of the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors. On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, motion carries. Senator Carville, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I moved the place in the voting file from the Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, Women's Affairs, Disability Services, the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation, and Agatne Restoration, the nomination of Peter R. Onidera to serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Mr. Peter R. Onidera to serve as a member of the Guam Council of Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Carville, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I moved the place in the voting file from the Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, Women's Affairs, Disability Services, the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation, and Agatne Restoration, the nomination of Saina Francisco B. Rabon to serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm. to do confirm.
On the motion, for the nomination of Saina Francisco B. Rabon to serve as a member of the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency Board of Directors, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Vice Speaker Anna, you are recognized.
Everybody, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place on the voting file from the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure, the nomination of Ms. Fabrine Cruz Respecho to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission with the recommendation to report out only.
On the nomination of Mr. Fabrine Cruz Respecho to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, there has been already an objection that has been articulated? Okay? Are there any discussions? There has been an objection initially by Senator Tidaway. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker, Manana Sidoos to the viewing public, and welcome to the 38th Guam Legislature. A rise in opposition to the appointment, Mr. Speaker, as I stated earlier, many questions were asked of this nominee, and sadly, in my opinion, none of them were really answered satisfactorily. And I also want to kind of just speak to this idea that the real estate industry somehow has the insight and the knowledge to perform at the Chamor Land Trust Commission. I just think it's very obvious to our people, there's a big difference in for-profit, private real estate business and public guardianship of our people's land, and so that's why I think it's a little bit like oil and water, frankly, nominating these realtors to these positions on the Chamor Land Trust Commission, especially when they, in the hearing, really revealed that they have little to no understanding of the mandates of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. I think that was very clear, and there was almost, I would say, a sense of entitlement from the nominee, as if they knew that no matter how they answered or didn't answer the questions, that their nomination would somehow be pushed through by this body, and we're about an hour and a half into the first session of the 38th Guam Legislature, and I think that's my read too, is that these nominees are going to get pushed through. And it isn't a case of the governor's going to do what the governor's going to do, dale, we are a body that is supposed to provide a check and balance on the executive branch. And these fired commissioners were supposed to be protected from political influence. It's right there in the CLTC mandates, the tenets of what it means to be a commissioner. We're supposed to ensure that they're insulated from political interference, not support blatant political interference conducted by the hand of the governor, Mr. Speaker. And there really isn't much more to say, but I just wanted to formally lodge my opposition to this nominee, as well as the other nominees on the agenda being appointed to the Chamor Land Trust Commission, because I think it's very clear, if you look at a lot of the special interest shenanigans that happened in the 37th Guam Legislature, take a look around, our colleagues who are some of the most vocal supporters of the robbing of the CLTC were not elected back to serve by our people. And I think that's a warning that members in this legislature should heed, Mr. Speaker. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. On the motion, Senator Duñez.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chairman. I rise in support of the nomination. You know, I, there's some subjects in school that I didn't do too well in, but civics was one that I did pretty well in. And as far as government, and as far as what our law is called for in terms of separation of powers, all those who are nominated to boards and commissions serve at the pleasure of the governor. Not only this governor, but other governors have asked for resignations from those who serve at the pleasure of the governor. Board members, directors. Our duty and our job is to confirm or not confirm. The protest to what the governor is executing in terms of her fiduciary responsibility, whether we agree with it or not, and whether we agree with the nominee or not, is to vote them up or down. If this body says that it will only choose, or individuals say they will only choose those to whom they agree with and who they believe would be the best in carrying out the duties, that also is the will of the body. A vote of eight will dispense of that issue. You can stand up and protest it, you can make all of the concerns that retiring speakers have made, but the deliberative process and the duty of our body is advising consent, and we do that by voting nominees up or down. Now, going back to the issue of Chamor Land Trust as a land holding, because I did a lot of work in this area when I was at land management, in fact, I tried to combine the agencies, but there was a lot of resistance in different bodies, because they have so much like functions. You still have to have surveys, you have to follow the subdivision law, there should be a discussion on highest and best use of property. The charter for the Chamor Land Trust has been, since ever since, that there has to be a funding mechanism to be able to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the thousands of acres in the inventory of the Chamor Land Trust for its beneficiaries. So, I don't, I can see where some would say that they don't believe that these individuals would act in the best interest, but one of the things that this body's been talking about is the fastest way to move forward with the most number of people is a subdivision, in fact, two subdivisions that we know many, at least three governors have already prepared but haven't been able to execute on. Subdivisions and subdivision law is what real estate professionals deal with. There are other members of the board that can guide them, and they, I'm sure they're quick studies, on the beneficiaries, in fact, if we're so good on the beneficiaries, then why are we only up to number three? So I stand once again ready to give these people an opportunity, because no matter how you paint it, the structure of the Chamor Land Trust is always going to be the structure of the Chamor Land Trust. The board members will be carrying out a fiduciary responsibility. All of what has to happen in Guam law to secure real estate, to be able to execute on putting our families in homes reside with Guam law. One is in the title business, the other is in real estate. For them to carry out their duties, they must follow all the laws of Guam with regard to real estate. Now, if they came in here and said, "We can't wait to chop that up and sell it," I'd have a problem with that. They came in here and said they can bring their expertise to the Chamor Land Trust, and they committed, they committed by one of my colleagues to say they would be working towards the endeavor of ensuring that that one subdivision that has been ready for years and years and years would be one of their major priorities to move forward. But as I close, Mr. Speaker, that wouldn't even matter if we can't get our act together and start making sure the line is set up properly and the issuances are set up properly. Subdivisions and preparing the property is only as good as we can recognize the beneficiaries and getting that going forward. That's all of the land agency's responsibility. So with that, Mr. Speaker, once again, I stand in support of this nominee. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Before I recognize another colleague who wants to speak on the matter, colleagues, stick to the nomination, not to basically the direction or the actions of the board in general. Stick to the nomination, okay? With that, Senator March, you are recognized, and I'll go to Senator Long.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I want to say I stand and rise in support of the nomination for Ms. Fabrine Cruz Respecho, who I have known for many, many decades. Her professional expertise as a real estate broker is one that has taken her with a lot of heart and passion and putting a lot of families into homes, but more importantly, her love and passion for family and for our island. I think that her expertise, being in the arena of real estate, has proven her acceptable to be in this position. As you know, Mr. Speaker, that when the nominations came from the governor, and as I agreed with the good retiring speaker from Tamuning, my primo, about the process and how we go through this august body to get nominations in, these are people with professional, with professions in our island community who want to not just give back, but to volunteer, because I think by law, they could get a stipend of $50 or depending on what discipline you are, maybe even up to $1,000, but this Chamor Land Trust, I don't think pays a heavy commission. This is almost a volunteer position, Mr. Speaker, and Mrs. Fabrine Cruz Respecho, who grew up in Dedido, who lives in the central area right now, who has had a professional real estate license for more than two decades, who has been a part of giving back to this community in her professional capacity, has accepted a position from our maga haga, whether we like the administration or not, we look at the merits of what our community residents can do, and Mrs. Respecho, Fabrine Cruz Respecho, has stepped up to that volunteer plate to give back, to better understand, and what better way than to give her expertise on what she does for our island as a personal conviction to work with land and our community? What better way for her to give back? So, Mr. Speaker, I stand and rise in support of this nomination for Mrs. Fabrine Cruz Respecho, because she has literally taken time out of her family schedule, her professional environment, because she wants to give back to our island in the way of supporting Chamor Land Trust. And it's up to this body, if there's eight members in this body to support that, then let's follow the process through. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support and speak on behalf of a resident of our island of Guam who wants to serve and give back, to work closely with the Chamor Land Trust and its mission mandates, to give more opportunity for our island residents within the indigent community and the law-to-moderate community to own houses and to have a place to go home. That's what it's about. Sidoos and bene dici, Senator Masi.
Sidoos Masi, Senator. On the motion, Senator Long, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just want to be really simple in what we're doing here. We are here to consent and advise whether or not the nominees to the boards and commissions will be justified to sit on these board or commissions of these agencies. What we're not here about is whether or not we agree with removal of individuals to these boards or commissions. That's not our duty. We have yet to vote. When in the voting file, then each and every one of our members can either vote up or down whether these appointees, nominees, will be in these commissions or boards or commissions. We need to stick to what our duties are. I'm sure if it's amended that our duties, part of our duties is to agree or not with removal of individuals, until such, until such time that that happens, that's not what we're here about. We are here to either approve or disapprove of members appointed. I'm sure if we were here debating whether or not we have the authority to remove these folks, I'm sure the vote will be different, but that's not our duty. We keep talking about the separation of powers. Let's stick to the powers that we have, advice and consent. We may disagree. The folks that have been replaced, I don't think anybody has any bad feelings of these folks that were there, but that's not our duty. They don't serve at our pleasure. They don't serve at our pleasure. Next election, maybe someone from here will be an ad lute, and you're going to be the one that will be sending folks down here for confirmations. Until such time, that is not your power. This is the legislature with separate branch of government, separate powers, a power to advise and consent, not whether we agree with the removal of individuals. Until such time that that has been a clause that will dictate our power, I'm sure it'll be different, but right now, let's stick to that. And with that, Mr. Speaker, again, remind the body, we still need to vote, and it still remains to be seen whether or not the governor will get her appointees. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Long on the motion. Senator Tidaway, you are mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll try to make this short. I mean, I know Fabrine, I've known her for many, many years, since we were kids, you know, hanging out in her backyard at her mother's house with her sister Sabrina. I know she's very capable to do the job, but, Mr. Speaker, we are here because of the situation, the situation that we need to ensure that the people that we confirm are not yes-men's to anybody except to the people of Guam, very simply put. Even yourself, Mr. Speaker, when this happened and they were removed from their position with no misconduct, no issues at hand, you even appointed one of those who were dismissed, Mr. Ibanis. That's very telling. I wish we could make an amendment to actually, you know, our motion on the floor, to put him as a nominee. So, Mr. Chair, it's the principle that I stand here in support of not moving these three nominations forward. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. On the motion, Mr. Speaker. Senator Sin Augustine, you are recognized.
You know, my last colleague from, from Tamuning, mentioned beyond the one nominee we're talking about, I stand in support of all three. I'm waiting for that time to come and speak in support of it by voting yes for all three to be confirmed. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sin Augustine. Thank you, Senator Sin Augustine. On the motion. Okay. On the, ma'am, I'm sorry, Senator Tali, you did express the opposition to all three initially. I've already given you the opportunity. Thank you very much. On the motion, anybody else who hasn't spoken on the motion? You have spoken initially that you have stated you are in opposition of all three. So I'm recognizing that you already voiced all opposition of all three. That is taking your, okay? Moving this process along.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. We respect, there is a motion on a nominee, and I'd like to speak on that motion. According to the standing rules, we are entitled to speak on every motion.
You are entitled to speak on a motion, yes, but you had initially already expressed your opposition to all three.
Yes, while I was speaking on a previous motion.
You have already, and you used that opposition, used that time to speak, to express the opposition. Is your, is your, is your motion or your presentation going to do otherwise?
It is to speak on this motion.
Is it?
It's a totally different motion, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
I will allow you a little bit of time. Go ahead.
Sisus Masi. Civics does not tell us as the legislature to roll over and approve all of the governor's nominees. It tells us to do our job, and that is to vet, to determine, to do checks and balances, to use everything in our power to make sure that justice is done.
Senator Tali, can you please stick to the motion?
I am, Mr. Chair. This is things that were brought up during the public hearing, and I am reiterating them on this nominee. They have talked about the job of this nominee and whether we can hold nominees and governors accountable for removal of people. Sure, they serve at the pleasure of the governor. The governor can terminate, but we do not have to confirm. And if there is no other rationale or reason, I think these nominees would also want that we would stand up and support them if they were doing their job and terminated for no reason.
Senator Tali, can you please stick to the nomination?
Mr. Chair, I am simply reflecting things that were said at the public hearing, things that were said on the floor today about civics.
You are speaking on the nomination of Ms. Fabrine Cruz-Respechul.
These commissioners, I believe, I've not seen a commissioner on the Tamora Land Trust Commission who is incompetent as to subdivisions or what we're supposed to do with them. We're on applicant number eight because of past corruption and errors, because the Attorney General found 102 leases out of order, null and void.
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to rule, Senator Tali, you are out of order. Thank you very much. On the, on the motion, on the motion.
Mr. Speaker, I'm speaking on the nomination.
I have ruled you out of order, Senator Tali.
For what, by what rule?
I have enough, I have allowed enough flexibility, okay, to be able to speak and not out of bounds. I speak specifically on the motion.
This is absolutely on the motion to approve a CLTC nominee, Mr. Speaker.
I have ruled you out of order. On the motion.
Mr. Speaker, I rise to a point of order. I'd just like to read, it feels so indulgent to me, the section of the standing rules relevant to the members' privilege. Speaking in debates, a member has a right to speak only once for a period not to exceed 15 minutes on a question at the same stage of procedure on the same day on any motion or amendment. And so although Senator Tali spoke on the previous motion, that was a whole different motion. So we are elected to come in here and debate and discuss, and our standing rules are very clear that every single person in this body has the right and the privilege to speak for at least 15 minutes on every motion that is debatable, and clearly this is one, Mr. Speaker, with all due respect.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your point of order. However, there's also an area in our standing rules, okay, with regards to germaneness, okay? And I am calling, I've ruled in the issue on the order of germaneness, okay? Thank you very much. On the motion.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Is there any other individual, any other senator that wants to speak?
Mr. Speaker, on a point of information, please.
What's your point of information, Senator?
Just based on the original motion as proffered, I want to say that we either voted up or down based on who has spoken already and how the process is debated. So this is the concurrence that's already done. I ask that we move for the vote.
Okay. On the motion.
Mr. Speaker, point of order.
Speaker, point of order, Senator Tali.
Yes, the point of order is Rule 1.02D3. It talks about speaking in debates. It tells you how much time we have. It does not limit what we talk about, except if we talk about a non-reported bill. And I am not talking about a non-reported bill. I am talking about a CLTC nomination, and that is absolutely the question that is before us.
Mr. Speaker, your ruling has already been that she is out of order.
I am making a point of order, Mr. Speaker.
Unless there's a motion to override the speaker's motion, or then it's not debatable.
I would ask for consultation with the parliamentarian, Mr. Speaker.
Order, okay? Enough. Order. I've already ruled, I'm giving you the opportunity to speak based on your point of order. I've given you that opportunity. Thank you very much.
Well, I was interrupted, Mr. Speaker.
So noted.
The debate is confined to the question before the body. That's Rule 1.02D3C.
Mr. Speaker, once again, you have ruled her out of order.
The debate before the body is whether to confirm this person to the CLTC, and that is exactly what I am talking about, Mr. Speaker.
Are you done?
No.
No, thank you very much.
I'd like to talk about.
I've ruled that portion out of order already, Senator Tali. Senator Tali, I've also given you the opportunity to speak on your point of order. So noted in your point of order, my order still stands. My order was that, okay, first off, you keep this, you keep your discussions germane to the nomination, not to the operations of the Tamora Land Trust.
That is absolutely the nomination before us, Mr. Speaker, and the previous speakers spoke about civic.
On the motion, there has been an objection. Okay, all those in favor of the nomination of Ms. Fabrine Cruz-Respechul?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I moved to overrule the speaker's ruling. Otherwise, we are going to be having censorship in here, and who decides what we get to talk about?
On the motion, all those, all those in favor of moving the nomination of Ms. Fabrine Cruz-Respechul?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I moved to overrule the speaker's ruling.
I am not done. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Fourth, to move the nomination to the voting file. There is an objection. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, round three. I moved the place to the voting file from the Land Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure, the nomination of Jeremy J. Rojas to serve as a member of the Tamora Land Trust Commission with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, there has been an objection. However, there is room for discussion, any discussion on this motion. Keep it germane. Senator Tali.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to speak on this nomination to the Tamora Land Trust Commission by repeating what was said at the public hearing, the questions that were asked of these nominees and their answers as to whether they could perform the duties of the Tamora Land Trust Commission, whether we as a legislature should confirm them. That is the question before us. That is the question that we should be debating. They made, it was made very, very clear to these nominees and to the entire people of Guam that if commissioners do not toe a certain line, they will be removed. And what were they about to do when they were removed? They were about to hire a director that meets their qualifications for the first time since the inception of the Tamora Land Trust according to the statute, to not allow a revolving door of political directors. And we asked these nominees whether they were going to be able to do that. They were not familiar that much with what was actually happening at the time. They did not commit whether they would do as mandated by statute, vet the qualifications, and hire their own director or accept a political appointee. They did not make it clear that they understood the corruption that had taken place at the Tamora Land Trust by previous directors, previous actions, or the errors that held back 102 applications deemed null and void by the Attorney General. They didn't understand the delays that the Tamora Land Trust had been facing. They had no idea about the court case that had been won, that the challenges to the trust, two times, one in the District Court and one in the Superior Court of Guam, and how, what type of fiduciary duty they needed to really ensure that these mandates that we are asking them to do are going to go forward, that they are going to be able to stand up to political pressure, that they are going to be able to stand up to pressure from private businesses for the land and the trust to the detriment of the beneficiaries, the 8,000-plus on the list since 1995 and more of them. They had no idea about the USDA loans that the previous commissioners, the ones that were fired, were able to secure, to partner with Guam Housing, and to make sure that we are going to get, vet these applicants so that they can actually build homes. They were not familiar with how we were going to get sewer onto the properties, divide them up smaller so that we can give out more land because we have a greater demand than we have inventory. And so for that reason, I have nothing personal against these nominees, but I just don't believe this is the time that we are going to go backwards in the Tamora Land Trust history again. We need to go forward. We as a legislature, it is our civic duty. You don't like protests? Well, we didn't get this Tamora Land Trust in place without a protest. And we do not. It is not our job. We were not elected to roll over for every nominee, not at all. So it's absolutely our duty here, Mr. Speaker, and that's what I stand in support of, us the legislature doing our duty, allowing these trustees to do what is mandated by statute and not to be given this message that they are forewarned, you do it my way or you're going to be removed. You, not those people who are doing procurement wrong, not those people who are hiring wrong, but you who are trying to follow the statute. You will be removed. I don't want to reward that. Sisus Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tali. On the motion. On the motion. Vice Speaker, you're recognized. Raise your hand if you'd like to be able to be recognized, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I heard the passionate voices of those who have spoke before me. You know, our committee has done its due diligence and work in moving these committees, these nominations forward. We have been in office a little bit over three months now, and I think it's safe to say that we've moved bills and nominations forward out of our committee. Previously, you had nominations stay in committees for a year, and now, and also bills, but now we're moving forward, and that's what progress is about. Now, we may not like the process of how the administration does things, but that's why there's separation of powers. The administration doesn't like how we do things as well, but that's this legislative body's power as well. As the previous speaker said before, the good gentleman from Tamooning, he mentioned that, you know, we're here to advise and consent. We had the hearings, we put out the committee reports. I reported the way it was voted on, to report out only and to confirm. And now it's this body's job to vote the nominees up or down. And it's the administration's job to hold their appointees to do what is their job to do in the commissions, boards, and commissions, even directors. Are we going to get it right 100%? Absolutely not. But what we need to do is we need to continue to move forward. Are we going to have an objection every single time that some new nominee is brought forward that will never be able to fill the boards? People are in their professions for a reason, and I believe there is good in every single person to do what is right and to do what is needed to do for the people of Guam. I stand in full support of the three nominees that have been presented to this body for confirmation, and I will hold them accountable because I do have oversight of the Tamora Land Trust Commission should anything not seem what it's supposed to be. But I think to hit these individuals personally or professionally without even giving them the opportunity to show what they can do, to say that this is all about what, whatever the yes man or the no man, it's not. They're licensed professionals. I don't believe that a licensed professional is going to do something against their ethics I'm not a licensed professional, but I do have ethics and I do have principles, and I hold them to a very high standard. So again, this body is here to advise and consent, and we vote up or down. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, good gentleman from Tamooning. Sir, you are recognized.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Chair. Once again, I rise in support of this nomination, Jeremy Rojas. It was interesting to listen to how attuned they were during the confirmation hearing to the duties and responsibilities. I don't know if anyone searched through the packet or listened to some of the back and forth, but Jeremy Rojas was a multi-year director, president of the Guam Housing Corporation. Speaking to Jeremy Rojas, Mr. Chair, keeping in the lines. The bottom line is, is that the Tamora Land Trust Commission, or the Guam Housing Corporation, is the primary lender for Tamora Land Trust because the property is not fee simple. Almost all of the financing that's been done for the Tamora Land Trust has been done with the Guam Housing Corporation, backed by veterans, loans, or now the possible impending other opportunities with USDA. other opportunities with USDA. The subdivisions and the property is useless to anyone who cannot get financing. The land is going to be available, but I don't think the government's going to build Other than the utilities agencies which are government, I don't think that they're going to put in their own utilities. All these things are a function of financing and of government. I'm sure Jeremy, during his time, signed off on numerous loans where Chamorah families right now live on the trust properties. Unless we're going to not set them up to succeed and have them sit in a palapala or a container, you're going to need people who understand this process. So I can't think of anybody better than Jeremy, who that was one of his day-to-day obligations when he came to work. No matter how we slice it, these nominees and the duties and responsibilities of what they're going to do, and hopefully we raise the standard through subdivisions and power and water and everything else to build proper homes and to get proper power and water into agricultural properties are done through people who understand the process. The Chamorah Land Trust Commission has a staff, Mr. Speaker. They are the ones who are supposed to guide the Chamorah Land, the board on what's going on, just like land management. The director doesn't make decisions without the Guam Land Use Commission, those are all The board deliberates and they carry out the fiduciary responsibility. So I just think it's mind-boggling to not think that someone with title, experience, licensed professional, as my colleague said, who are going to compromise? And the understanding in terms of the loan mechanism for Chamorah Land Trust recipients to build a decent, proper housing structure that can even be insured. For that reason, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair, I support the nomination of Jeremy Rojas.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, good Senator from Tamuning, you are recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, again, very short, you know, to keep it timed down, but, you know, I, I have nothing against Jeremy Rojas at all. I think he's capable of doing it, but I, you know, just want to send a message out to him that I'm sure you can do a good job, but just remember, if you don't answer yes to the governor, you too will be removed. You too will be removed. And what are we going to do as a body? Earlier, we talked about if, you know, one of these board members decide to vote in favor of the people instead of what the governor wants, and it happens a second time, Mr. Speaker, a second time. What is this body going to do then? Continue to tout about how the governor appoints and the separation of powers and, no, we have a responsibility to the people, to the people of Guam. That's who we work for. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion. On the motion. All right, there has been an objection. Good Senator from Baragat Heights, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to lodge my concerns about these nominations before Chamorah Land Trust and specifically Jeremy Rojas and others. I didn't get to speak earlier, but being that we're on this motion, it also applies to the other two. You know, I think it's, you know, it's important to note that, you know, that in, in listening to the responses at the public hearing, it was clear that there is very little knowledge of the history of the Chamorah Land Trust. And to me, we've made such huge, I guess, positive, positive moves in regards to the last term to really shore up the Chamorah Land Trust. And, you know, it, it concerns me that, you know, these nominees have very little understanding of it. And I think it's really critical because Chamorah Land Trust is a land restoration program. I know we're hearing talk about how we need to, how these, how these nominees are going to help with the development, but that is not the purpose of Chamorah Land Trust. And it's important that we do not lose sight of how important this trust is to the people of Guam. You know, our Chamorah people have been colonized and which land has been taken away from us, and it's really critical that these nominees ensure justice is served for our people. And like my colleagues have stated earlier, there have been shenanigans where, you know, which caused a huge tie-up of the release of these, these lands to people who have been waiting since the 1990s. And I say, let's not detract from this progress. We need to have members that are guardians and have a true understanding of what the Chamorah Land Trust is. We're not looking for developers, we're looking for, for members who have a true understanding of what this trust is, that it is to provide justice for our people. Let us not forget this, my people of Guam, my colleagues. Sidozmasi.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, good Senator from Jiggle, so you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, my understanding is that once these three nominees are confirmed, they have a quorum, and many of my colleagues have spoken about moving forward, then let's move forward. I stand in support of Mr. Rojas, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion. There was an objection to the motion. Senator Burnett, good Senator from Ipan.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on the motion. It's not every nomination that we're going to object to. It's going to be the ones that matter. We placed a bunch of nominations on this agenda without objection today, and these, these nominate, these nominees to the Chamorah Land Trust are drawing a lot of debate and discussion because that's the agency that's facing significant challenges now. One of the challenges that they're facing is the giveaway, the attempted giveaway of the Subun Point, Ipal Point property by way of a measure introduced here, and I wasn't satisfied with the answers that I received from this nominee and the other ones relative to that issue. And so, yes, we're supposed to advise and yes, we're supposed to consent, but, you know, yes, also, we're absolutely supposed to debate and discuss in this body. And it's, it's discouraging on the first day of our session that it almost seems like jungle roles. I mean, we had some jungle roles in the 37, but this is not something I was expecting in the 38th. And I expected to get heated, right? But I just think it's a little ironic that the voters spoke, the voters voted, and I believe that they wanted to inject more checks and balances and less rubber stamping into the 38th Guam Legislature, so it's a little discouraging to hear heckling as well from members who don't have the wherewithal to stand and speak on the record, but, you know, want to heckle those of us who choose to take a stand on, on the issues. Now, that's uncalled for, Mr. Speaker. And I, I think it's absolutely germane to discuss questions, issues that came up in, and not just in these, these public hearings for these nominees, but issues that are reported in the media. Absolutely germane to, to question whether these nominees are going to decide on the big issues facing the CLTC one way or another. That's kind of our job, to come in here and to, to question the nominees from the administration, not just to, you know, sit down and wait till the right time someone tells you to raise your hand a certain way. So sidozmasi again, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in opposition of these nominees, because let's be very clear what's happening here, is we had two commissioners who were doing the job they were supposed to do, and they were fired, and they were replaced with the wife of a cabinet member. And so that's absolutely also germane, because when you fire people who are doing their due diligence and then you bring in two people, of course, anybody with common sense, not common sense, would say that they got rid of the ones who were questioning things and are putting in some...
Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
Yes men. Dispense them, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Continue.
Okay, thank you. So I thank you again for the opportunity to speak this morning, Mr. Speaker, and to lodge my formal opposition to these nominees, and also to provide a little bit of reasoning as to why. It's not arbitrary, I feel like we've heard some very good reasons, and as the Chamorah Land Trust moves forward, let us not forget why they don't have a quorum. They don't have a quorum because Governor Lou fired the two commissioners, she would have rather brought a screeching halt to the progress at the Chamorah Land Trust Commission than go another day with commissioners there who are going to do their job according to the tenets and the mandates of the Chamorah Land Trust Commission. Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Colleagues, again, there's a time to be able to debate a bill that's going to change the direction of Chamorah Land Trust. This bill, this, this, this time is to debate the nomination of individuals. I don't see anything about jungle rules there. Anyways, on the emotion, there was an objection to the motion. On the motion to place the nomination of Mr. Jeremy J. Rojas to serve as a member of the Chamorah Land Trust Commission, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate it by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Senator Kavo, ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the place in the voting file from the Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, Women's Affairs, Disability Services, the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation and Hagatna Restoration, the nomination of Ms. Christine M. Wolk to serve as a member of the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to do confirm.
Okay. On the nomination of Ms. Christine M. Wolk to serve as a member of the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the place into the voting file from the Committee on Land, Housing, Environment, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure, the nomination of Mr. Gerald P. Yingling to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission with the recommendation to report out only.
On the motion to place the nomination of Mr. Gerald P. Yingling to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Mr. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I make a motion to recess until 1:00 P.M.
There is a motion to recess until 1:00 P.M. There is an objection, okay, it's non-debatable, so on the motion to recess until 1:00 P.M., please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. To recess until 1:00 P.M.